Invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Bill, would you pray this morning, please?
Oh my God, I have invited, sent out on this commissioner's board of spiritual wisdom, charity, and justice to stand as a purpose and faithfully serve this office. Most well-being of all citizens. We ask that you keep your hand on this county and all the people that may return to you forever for our guidance in the name of your son and my Savior Jesus Christ at every moment.
Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay. All right. Want to begin our meeting today.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of June 25th.
Sounds like a great motion.
I'll second.
Do we have a second?
Mr. Crabtree.
Aye.
Ms. Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
In a matter of request for appropriation of funds.
Are there any questions or comments in regards to item two? Hearing none?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Crabtree.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
In a matter of resolution congratulating Kim Carver on her retirement from Scioto County Emergency Management Agency.
Questions or comments in regards to item three? Hearing none?
Motion to adopt.
I'll second.
Mr. Crabtree.
Aye.
Ms. Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
In a matter of resolution to employee legal counsel in accordance with O R C 30514 regarding the Scioto County Board of D D.
Questions or comments in regards to item four? Hearing none?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Ms. Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Crabtree.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
In the matter of support letter for Scioto County Scenic Heritage Trail regarding creation of Ohio and Erie Canal Southern Descent Heritage Trail for Canal locks forty-eight and fifty.
Questions or comments in regards to item five? Hearing none?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Crabtree.
Aye.
Ms. Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
In the matter of request for appropriation transfer of funds.
Are there any questions or comments in regards to item six? Hearing none?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Crabtree.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
In a matter of accepting miscellaneous reports.
Questions or comments in regards to item seven? Hearing none?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Mr. Crabtree.
Aye.
Ms. Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
In the matter of notification from the Ohio Public Devender regarding indigent defense reimbursement.
Questions or comments in regards to item eight? Hearing none?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Ms. Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Crabtree.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
In the matter of resolution establishing a fund for the 2020 Scioto County Township Highway Improvement regarding the Engineering Department.
Questions or comments in regards to item nine? Hearing none?
Motion to adopt.
I'll second.
Mr. Crabtree.
Aye.
Ms. Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
In the matter of resolution establishing a fund for the 2020 Scioto County Joint Project regarding the Scioto County Engineering Department.
Questions or comments in regards to item ten? Hearing none?
Motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Ms. Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Crabtree.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
In a matter of approving payment of the regular scheduled accounts for the various funds, moral obligations, and the then annulled certificates in a total amount of one hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, two cents, or two dollars and seventy-one cents.
Questions or comments in regards to item eleven? Hearing none?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Crabtree.
Aye.
Ms. Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
In the matter of Water Pollution Control Loan Fund Agreement for the Scioto County Intercepter Project Regarding the Sanitary Engineering Department.
Questions or comments in regards to item twelve? Hearing none?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Crabtree.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Do you have anything in addition, Mrs. Coleman?
Not at this time.
Mr. Crabtree?
No.
All righty. We, uh, we have the press with us today and we'll go through questions on and off the agenda. And then, uh, at the end, if you all would like to stay, we have a very special presentation we'd like to do as well. And, uh, gentlemen of the press, and maybe there's ladies out there in the, in the cyber world. All right, go ahead.
I have two questions on the agenda, please. First one, addresses item eight regarding indigent defense for April of this year. Has, has COVID affected indigent defense costs? This will probably be the first month because I know that there were some kind of, there are things that the court systems are kind of bended out during that time period. So should we expect a jump coming up, say, for the indigent court defense costs for May or June? Do you think this is down or?
Well, I would like to say that it is, but it's not from what I can tell. It really hasn't made much of a difference. I think, um, you know, indigent defense continues to operate as long as attorneys are consulting with their clients. And in the case of those clients that were let out of jail at the time, they were sent home, they were bound to come back, they've been doing that. I, I think the billing really wasn't hampered that much. I think the wheels of justice continue to turn during those times. The, the total bill was fifty-three thousand, six hundred and ninety-four dollars. The amount approved was fifty-three thousand and ninety-one, which actually that, that's only mean six hundred and ninety-three dollars was disallowed, which is the lowest number I've, I've heard of since I've been in this position.
That's why I asked the question.
Yeah, so, um, we did get eighty-five percent reimbursement, um, but still, it may be down a little bit, but I don't think it's, I don't think it's been reduced that much. Will there be a spike? Yeah, I believe there will be. If you, if you see the amount of grand jury indictments we're seeing in the, in the, in the press that I've seen recently, my goodness. But at the same time, as part of those indictments, and I don't know the details of every case, I have no way of knowing that, but, um, I'm seeing a lot of efforts by common pleas and municipal to, to keep people out of jail as much as possible. Our jail population, I think this morning was one forty-one, something like that, which is a considerable bump up from what it was. But, um, you know, I, I think that they're, they're doing their best through community sanctions and other things to try to keep that number down.
Last year, I know Governor DeWine talked about accelerating the amount of cost from the state to go towards indigent defense, but with budget cuts that have been put in place this year, has that affected that pledge to your guys' understanding?
Um, to our knowledge, nothing's changed. We are at eighty-five percent. Mike, do you have anything you'd like to add on that?
Nothing new, but I, I think that it all depends on how the state budget comes out because, you know, they're like we are, you know? You have to do what you can with whatever money you've got. So if, you know, if, if the budget crunch gets, uh, out of control, I'm sure, you know, we'll fill it one way or another. It may not be an indigent defense, but it'll be somewhere else. You've got to remember on indigent defense, every dollar that we get reimbursement on, we get eighty-five cents, it only costs us fifteen cents, but for every dollar that they disallow because of the actions of some of the attorneys, uh, we have to pay a dollar for every dollar. So, you know, it, it, that's a hundred percent of every one of the dollars that they disallow. We still pay that. So.
Thank you.
You know, we, we just, hopefully, I, you know, I think that they're, they're still pretty strong about doing what they can to replace indigent defense. But, you know, right now, it remains to be seen what, uh, what COVID-19 has done to the budget nationwide, actually.
Okay, I must thank you. My second question is for item number twelve. Where does this loan originate? And is this work in addition to, uh, the wastewater work that began in that area in two thousand and nineteen?
Great questions, and I'm glad you asked. I really am. The, this particular loan is the line that runs from the wastewater treatment plant that we purchased, uh, for a dollar a couple of years ago and goes to the S O C F, the penitentiary. So when we bought it, we knew we was going to have to replace that line, uh, as one of the E P A orders. We took care of all the other E P A issues internally when we purchased that, which was something that, uh, actually S O C F was going to have to, um, they were going to have to actually bid that out and have all that work done. Our crews did all of that work and satisfied the E P A on all those issues, but this one. They gave us waivers to let us have the time to seek loans to do this. Um, the, the loan itself, um, is for one point three, one-three million, uh, to replace that line. And if you recall, when we negotiated rates with the state on this, um, this purchase, as part of the purchase for a dollar for what is now, um, valued well over nineteen million, that plant is, we got it for a dollar. We negotiated a higher rate to help pay for this over the term of this loan. So this loan, um, bears an interest rate of point eight, I'm sorry, point eight-seven percent for twenty years. Okay? It's an O W D A loan, um, or W P C L F loan, I'm sorry. And it, it's, it's, it's a great deal. It really is, and we can spread this money out over twenty years. Our, our agreement with the state is that there's built-in tiering for that rate over the years. It goes up what they pay, what they pay for the, our services now to them. So to cover this cost of this loan, so it's, it's a, it's actually a net positive for us long-term. But there's going to be a new, new line installed. This was the, um, bid opening that we did a couple of weeks ago, if you recall. And, um, and now we're, we're moving forward with the loan to get this work done this year. That's the goal. This will be done this year. So, um, J. P. Pickleheimer has done a wonderful job on behalf of the county on negotiating this and getting this loan. This is called the Scioto County Intercepter Project. And, um, it's, it's a, it's a good day for infrastructure in Scioto County.
Thank you. Again, just to clarify, where does this loan originate?
Uh, Ohio E P A.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
That's all I have.
All righty. Thank you very much. All right. Are we ready?
We, we have a couple on Facebook.
Okay.
The first one coming from Mark Craycraft.
Scioto County Daily News, okay?
The city posts the agenda and the complete wording of the proposals for public view. Why do the commissioners choose to post an agenda at the last minute and then everyone has to ask what just, what was just voted on? Isn't there a more transparent way to do this?
Could you repeat the first part of that? I didn't, I didn't hear.
The city posts the agenda and the complete wording of the proposals for public view. Why do the commissioners choose to post an agenda at the last minute and then everyone has to ask what was just voted on? Isn't there a more transparent way to do this?
Uh, we can look at that and see. I, I don't know.
The main reason is because I take, you know, I'm the one that puts the meetings together, and I take it up to the, the day before, sometimes the morning of the meeting. This isn't closed out, so we can't put an agenda out any earlier than it's closed out. So that's why. I mean, if, if I close off the meetings twenty-four hours ahead of time, which would be, you know, less productive, then we could do that, but otherwise we can't.
Yeah, the, we literally, there's things that come up, and because we meet twice a week, um, I, I believe city meets once every two weeks. We meet twice a week and we keep the business rolling of the, of the county. We have that luxury. The city's a little bit different form of government, um, in that. But we are, we are more than happy to, if, if they would like to come and get copies of the information, um, we're more than happy to share that information. That's not a problem whatsoever.
Our next question from Sin Mackley, Scioto County Daily News. With the disturbing revelations about child sex trafficking in our area contained in recent indictments, how concerned are you about potential cuts to CPS and their ability to take action in cases like that?
Oh, very, very concerned. We've actually discussed this in our meetings, uh, recently. I, I do not believe that education and child protective services is one of the areas that the governor should be targeting for cuts. I strongly disagree with that. I think there's other areas that they should be looking at, um, but right now, this is the decisions that they're making. The other areas are going to be cut, and we don't even know what the ramifications of those are, is, uh, job and family services. We have so many people out of work right now with the COVID and some jobs never coming back. You know, I, we don't know the actual result of that. We don't know how deep that's going to go, but there are a lot of people that are in need right now. So, uh, we're very concerned about, about those cuts. And, um, and, and yes, some, some of the stories that have been coming out recently are very, very discouraging, and we cannot at this time afford, um, cutting back on, on children's services, caseworkers, and investigators. It just, uh, is not, um, something that needs to happen right now. Kathy or Mike?
Sir.
All right.
From Karen Foster Mershon. When will the Center Street Dogwood Ridge Project begin in Berg by Sun Valley Condos?
That would be a question for, uh, the county engineer, Aaron Lebrun. Um, I'm, I'm not sure exactly what the schedule is on that right now. And I don't know if it's been impacted by cuts at the state level. I'm just not one-hundred percent certain about that.
That's everything for now.
Okay. We could try to find an answer. We'll try to do that. If we get, if we get an answer, we'll post an answer on that. Okay? Any other questions? Okay, well, we have a very special guest today, and, uh, I, I have, how do I want to word this? I've looked forward to honoring, but I haven't looked forward to this day in a way, uh, because we have a very special person. Our E M A Director, Kim Carver, is with us today. And Kim has decided, uh, to retire. She's not going away a hundred percent, uh, because I think it's in her blood to serve as she has distinguished service of thirty-three years in this county, and she has done a wonderful job, um, of taking care of us. A lot of people may wonder who watches over us as we sleep? And of course, we know the good Lord above does, but then there's someone else. A little bit, um, and I don't want to say closer because we know the Lord's close to, but there's someone else that, um, takes the time and actually has held the job of being that ever-watchful eye. I don't know how you've done it this long. I really don't. But I want Kim to come forward. We have something special for her today and the other commissioners. Yes, please, go right ahead.
I wanted to come over today, and I wanted to say thank you to the commissioners for allowing me to serve the citizens of Scioto County for so long. There's been so many changes since I've been there. Back in the day, we were civil defense, and then we were disaster services, and then we became emergency management, and then after nine-eleven, homeland security. And, and while the planning and the response changed over the years, the one thing that's never changed is the resilience of our community. And no matter what has been handed to them, time and time again, they persevere. And I don't know how many times all of us have seen neighbors at each other's throats one day, and then something bad happens, and then they're, they're, they're helping that neighbor the next day. So that kind of restores your faith in humankind. So it's been a, it's been a great pleasure for me to serve, and I would be remiss if I didn't give a shout-out to the first responders in our community because they are the very grassroots level that saves lives every day. And most of them have full-time jobs and get up in the middle of the night, sometimes seven days a week, and they're there to save their neighbors. And so what a wonderful bunch of first responders we have here, and what a wonderful bunch of people have helped in E M A at the emergency center for like over twenty years, a core group of people. While I won't be the director after today, one of our core group will be, and that same group of people is still going to help when everything goes north and we need to, to get together at the E O C and, and do the things we do for the people in the county. So shout-out to all of them because they've been, um, faithful, to say the least.
Yes. We, uh, s, over six months ago, started this process. Kim came to us and, and gave us, um, the sad news that, uh, she was gonna, I don't want to say ride into the sunset because she's not, she's still going to volunteer, she's still going to be there to help, which is admirable and wonderful that you're willing to do that. Her service will not stop, and, and it's just in her blood. But she came to us six months ago, and we started talking about this process because it is that important. This isn't one that you walk in one day and say, "I'm giving my two-week notice." This is a process, and we appreciate so much your candor in coming and saying, "Look, this is, this is what I'm doing. I feel we need to start this process." And we did that. And Larry Mullins will be taking over. He is, of course, the assistant or deputy director. He will no longer be deputy director. Matter of fact, he started taking those phone calls already, uh, to be director, but he, those that have been watching have seen him here, uh, making, um, different, you know, announcements about COVID especially. And some may have been asking, "Where was the director?" Well, the director was doing what, what she has always done, monitoring, taking care of the situation back at home base, but also making sure that Larry was getting his feet wet and doing what he, he's going to be doing. So, uh, it's been a very seamless transition. It really has.
A lot of people probably don't realize, but Larry has been the Public Information Officer for E M A for twenty-five years.
Yes.
So he's been in the E O C for all the presidential disaster declarations that we've had, and we've, you know, we've had a variety of emergencies, and he's been there for all of them. So he's not a newbie.
No, he's not. Very, comes very experienced, and I know that the first responders are very much behind this, that they are very glad about this move as far as how it was done, very seamless. And, and in the emergency management world, um, doing things haphazard isn't welcome. You, you need to have a plan. A plan is really important. And, and Kim came to us with a plan on how to move forward. And of course, the decision, uh, for the director would be up to us, but, um, you know, it was a plan to start down that path, and it, it worked out. It was really, I don't know if anybody noticed, but it was very seamless, it was very, uh, methodical, and, uh, six months. It took six months, but that's the importance, that really draws out the importance of the position. And so that is.
Here's a little bit about the value of E M A. I see the economic development folks are here now.
Yes.
Probably over the years, well in excess of forty million dollars, the office has brought in in disaster funds and grants. And if one dollar turns over, how many times in a community? Seven?
Yeah, seven to ten.
That's a lot of money from E M A.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, and E M A's, it, it's amazing, a lot of people, and we got this question, I think, last week or the week before last, about what is, what is going on right now? You know, COVID, you, you've stood down some on that, but you're still monitoring heavily. But I know that P P E is, you know, there's a big push for P P E right now, just in case we see a spike. We're seeing a little bit of one right now, but for the most part, our, our first responders, hospitals, and et cetera, are, are pretty stocked. I mean, they're ready to go. So, um, it's constant preparation. We talked about hazard mitigation. You know, I, I overheard you talking, uh, to Ryan about hazard mitigation, and, uh, you know, we're still working on our plan, and, and of course, that's ever-changing and.
Actually, it's submitted to FEMA, so we're just waiting for the rubber stamp.
Yeah, but it's, it's changed as a result of the pandemic. We actually, when we first met, I was, a year ago, probably, when we first started talking about the plan, um, pandemic was way, way down on the list. It really was, and that has caused us to reevaluate. And, uh, so, so anyways, we would like to present you with something today. All right? So you get to be embarrassed. Kim hates this, by the way. Everybody's just, just.
Because it's a team. It's the emergency management team.
It is, but you've been team leader for a long time. Okay? So come on up if you don't mind. Can we have someone to take the pictures? All right. I'll go right here. All right. Here you go. Okay, I'm going to present this to her, and if you'll take a picture. I want you to like my coffee cup. Those beautiful pictures. All right. This is presented by Kimberly Carver. Nineteen eighty-seven, nineteen ninety-one, E M A Public Information Officer, nineteen ninety-one to two thousand and twenty, E M A Director. In appreciation and recognition of your commitment and dedication, thank you for thirty-three total years of loyal service. Best of luck in your retirement, and it's signed by all three commissioners. And I have a resolution as well, um, for Kim today. It was moved by Mr. Crabtree and seconded by Ms. Coleman that the following resolution be adopted. Whereas Kim Carver began her career on July fifteenth, nineteen ninety-one, I think, actually, it was, uh, sooner than that, actually, yes, as the Scioto County Management Director, that was as director. Whereas Kim has been involved with the E M A since nineteen eighty-eight, thirty-two years. She first started as Public Information Officer, as a member of the Local Emergency Planning Committee, and whereas Kim has an official retirement date of June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. And whereas Jim has, or Kim has led Scioto E M A through floods. Now, see, this, this is where it's at right here. Who did all of this? Who, who monitored this? Who let the public know? Through floods, record snowfall, prison riots, ice storms, and most recently, the COVID-nineteenth pandemic. And whereas Kim is a longtime member of Rice United Methodist Church of Sciotoville, where she plays the organ. And whereas Kim is a member of the Scioto County Amateur Radio Emergency Services Ares Club, and enjoys spending time with her family, and loves to be out in nature, now therefore be resolved that the County Board of Com, uh, yeah, Board of County Commissioners in Scioto County, Ohio, congratulates Kim Carver on her retirement from the Scioto County Department of Emergency Management Agency on this thirtieth day of June and the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty. Congratulations. Get a picture together here. I think you already got some, but anyways.
One, two, and three. One, two, and three.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Much deserved.
I got some, I gave somebody that last one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
So grateful. We got to do the public hearing.
Wonderful job. Is it time? Yes, it is. We're past time.
Yep.
All right. We go ahead and do that? All right. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for indulging us on that. We're going to be doing our C D G second public hearing. I'm, I'm really excited about this public hearing because there's some really great things that are going to be happening, hopefully, in our community. We have to say hopefully because we are still in the application process. We have applied, uh, for our C D G, but this is the notice, the second public hearing. Scioto County intends to apply, and we have now to the Ohio Development Services Agency for Funding under the, the Community Development Block Grant Program, Small Cities Direct Allocation Program, and federally funded program administered by the state. June eleventh, the county conducted its first public hearing to inform the citizens about the C D B G pro, C D B G programs, how they may be used, what activities are eligible, and other important work, program requirements. This is our second hearing. The county is eligible for two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars for the twenty-twenty slash twenty-twenty-one direct allocation funding, and provided the county meets applicable program requirements. Based on both citizen input and local officials' assessment of the county's needs, the county First of all, the Shawnee State University Golden Bears Holistic Healthcare Program for a total of fifty thousand dollars and fifty thousand four hundred dollars. Uh, this helps them with all of their activities for the seniors that work so hard to support Shawnee State University. Uh, it gives them a lot of, uh, money for activities that they do surrounding all of that, and they do support a lot of the, the kids, um, or should I say, young people at Shawnee State University. Their program has been kind of slowed because of the COVID, but they'll be back at it soon. Secondly, Seventeenth Street Community Center renovations. That is the, what a lot of people would term as the Armory. Um, if you'll recall, last year, a new roof was put on the Armory or the Seventeenth Street Community Center. Actually, it's, it's, it's better well-known now as the Fourteenth Street Learning Center. Uh, they're doing GED work there, um, for low-to-middle income individuals. Uh, they, I, if I heard right, and they're, we're meeting the other night, correct me if I'm wrong, I said that they, they had twelve graduating from the program, which is wonderful. Uh, the press, you might want to check on that and talk to them about their GED program. It's wonderful, and they're looking to extend that through December at a minimum to get as many people as possible that have not graduated yet. Education is key to help people come out of poverty, and they are getting that done at, at that center. So, uh, I think it'd be a wonderful story if people could follow up on it and find out how they're doing that. The renovations, um, that are going to be done with this particular bucket of money would be, uh, restroom renovations, a new commercial kitchen. Uh, that'll help support their work that they're doing, um, as part of their COVID crisis work, uh, to feed the homeless. They have a contract with the Homeless Shelter where they're actually housing homeless up there, which is wonderful. Um, you know, we're, we're always hearing stories about people being turned away because there's just not enough room in the homeless shelter. They're doing work up there for them, so it's really a positive. Another story, it's really not being told in the community that you might want to check out. It, it could be a very good story. Um, but they're doing those renovations as well as painting and new windows for the facility. Uh, so a year ago, through CDPG, actually, two years ago, the roof project was approved through CDPG. The work was done last year, so they have a new roof over the main, the main dome of the, uh, building, and now they're going to be doing these renovations that are going to be very, very nice and, uh, bring it up to code and bring it up out of the seventy-year-old facility that, that was originally built. Uh, in addition to Seventeenth Street homeless shower room, they're going to be converting an area for showers for the homeless. Um, cleanliness is next to godliness, I guess, and, and that's very important, so we're going to be doing that. And also, uh, administration and fair housing goes along with that for fifty-seven thousand six hundred. Uh, total for Seventeenth Street is a hundred and eighty thousand, which will be a huge, huge benefit for them. Backup projects are the PIDC facility upgrade and roof repair. And that is that. Are there any questions? Any comments? Any concerns? All right. Can we get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Crabtree.
Aye.
Ms. Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye. Can we get a motion to...
We will recess because we have another...
Motion recess.
Got to recess. Uh, public viewing at Crane Road and Skull Hollow. If anybody, um, wants to, you can attend that. It's going to be a great time. We're not bringing donuts, but, uh, if you want to come, Crane Road and Skull Hollow, and, uh, with a public hearing following that, so, um, that's it.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Crabtree.
Aye.
Ms. Coleman.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye. Hey, by the way, I want to, I want to say something right here publicly. Congratulations to Debbie Brewer, uh, first female police chief in Portland Police Street. Wonderful, wonderful. Uh, she, she, you know, went through her six months, and, and I, I think they picked a wonderful, wonderful police chief, and, uh, I've heard nothing but good things, and I think that she's going to do a great job. So, public, let's get behind her, and I know she's got a tough job, a real tough job, so let's, let's really support her and the, and those that were also promoted from within the Portland Police Department. Support all the, all the ones in blue. Let's, let's get behind our law enforcement, and let's do our best to, uh, to let them know that we support them, and through very trying and hard times, very hard times right now, so we support you blue. Thank you. Anybody else? All right, we're dismissed.
It does take out forty-five minutes.